Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Matt Tondle, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosehacker as Vice Chair, and I'm Greg Rosenbaum Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw Planning Director, Eric Engle and Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When the case is heard, you'll have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. There are no changes to the consent, so I'm going to get started with reading the consent cases. These are the cases I was just talking about. If you're here for one and you feel that you want to discuss it, you'll have to stand up and let me know. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six, Case C-10-8-220, See 12-8-221. Applicant, Western Springs Land Corporation, is on consent for approval. Request revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of Kingsington Park lots 19 through 22, a subdivision outside city limits, with approval of rezoning from AG to MU, along with approval of a waiver to Section 5384D lot frontage, and approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Kingsington Park. Location northwest of 204th and Q Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seven, Case C-10-24-269. Applicant Creating Homes LLC, it is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to CC. Location 1401 Williams Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C-10-24-275, See 10-21-103, M-180, I mean, the applicant is M-180 LLC, it is on for approval. The request, approval of a rezoning from DR and MU to MU, along with approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Maple 180. Location northeast of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Ten, Case C-10-24-276. Applicant, Pacific Professional Building LLC, it is on for approval. Request approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location 10707 Pacific Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-24-279. Applicant, Tracy Seeline, it is on for approval. Request approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location 15230 West Maple Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-7-24-270. Applicant, Melvin Sudbeck Homes, it is on consent for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the R2 District. Location 24910 Mason Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-14-24-278. Applicant, Planning Board, it is on for approval. Request vacation of a portion of an alley abutted by Block 1, Schola Edition, and lots 1 through 17 Woodland Lawn. A Woodland, Wood Lawn Edition. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-7-24-277. Applicant, Candeline Scott, it is on for layover. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the R435 District. Location 3723 North 54th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. Agenda Item Number Fifteen will be removed. And that's it for the consent items. Do we have a motion for the consent items that were on for approval?
I motion to approve Agenda Items Number Six, Seven, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Thirteen, and Sixteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Okay, we're going to pick up with Agenda Item Number Fifteen. That was just removed. I'll read that again. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-7-24-277. Applicant, Candeline Scott, it was on for layover, was removed. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the R435 District. Location 3723 North 54th Street. And is the applicant here? No? Okay. Are there any proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? If you're, yeah, come forward, give your name and address, please.
Donna Green. Oh, sorry.
That's, you're good.
Donna Green, 3747 North 54th Street.
Okay.
Parking on our street is very limited. We are wondering if this is for a secondary rental aspect. A majority of the houses on our block are rental. We are homeowners. My husband Greg and I are homeowners. And like I say, parking's at a premium. You can only park on one side of the street. We have winter coming up. Snow is awful. And if this is going to be a secondary dwelling to where they're going to have one person on top and another person on the bottom, we are not for it. We are opposed to it. If it is simply a handicap accessible or a mother-in-law dwelling, we are fine with it.
Okay.
Does that explain it?
Yep.
Okay.
Sure does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Eric, did you want to address Donna's concerns and this is, was on layovers?
Yeah, so the city had recommended layover. There were some deficiencies that needed to align with the site plan and the floor plan and the submittal. We needed some additional information that we were not comfortable with recommending approval. As far as ADUs in general, they cannot be sold separately from the primary dwelling unit, so I don't, I'm looking at the submitted operating statement. Part of the statement says the goal is to, using the existing two-car garage at their property's rear, the goal is to convert the property into an ADU. The goal is to allow this to be a private dwelling unit for visiting single-family guests. That is all the information that I have. It, to me, that is, that sounds on a rental basis, but, you know, I'm just reading off of the operating statement. I don't know 100% of the details of who would live there, but to me, that reads that it would not be a permanent family member living in the unit. The code does allow it to be, you know, rental. I mean, by nature, it has to be because it can't be sold separately. But whether that's a family member or a friend or just, you know, just somebody unique, there's not a code provision that restricts or prohibits any of those uses. So I guess that's what I would say. I would lean towards the applicant if they were here to be able to provide that information. So Ms. Green, if you do want to reach out, we can provide you with contact information that we have for the applicant, so.
That would be great. I try to contact them. When contractors are working on this house, they're parking in correct.
Okay.
And free time.
So you probably received a letter from us. There's a phone number at the bottom of the city planner, so reach out to that planner and we can get that contact information to you. Otherwise, I'll leave it at that. Accessory dwelling units are something that we do support in all parts of the city, so if the applicant is able to work through some of the planned submittal and items that need clarification, the city would likely recommend supportive it at a future meeting, but there is additional information that is needed. So staff recommends layover.
Can I give you one more?
Yeah. Give your name and address again, please.
Donna Green, 3747 North 54th. Two concerns that, from what you're stating, the contractors, whenever they're there, they're parking on the side of the street, that there are signs everywhere that says no parking on this side of the street. I, being a nice person, decided to go down and spoke with them. They did move, but they mentioned that the lady that lives right directly across the street, which I'm surprised she's not here, was very upset and did not want them parking in front of her house. It's a pit. Right now, it looks awful. There is mud running onto the street because they have stopped and nobody's back and forth doing anything. So I have a lot of concerns about it.
And you'll be able?
I'll, I'll state it. I'll call them. That's fine. I just wanted, so that he knew.
There'll be another hearing on.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and just a few comments. If, if there is illegal parking, you know, call the police. That is not something that the Planning Department can handle, so.
And you want to know what we're told?
Well, I'll leave it at that. That's not, that's not my area here as a planner.
It's not a priority.
Well, so I'll leave it at that. I guess if there is work being done on this unit, they don't have approval for an ADU yet, so I guess I'm a little concerned maybe of what work is being done, if there's proper permits that have been taken out, so, you know, you can always talk to the planner on the sheet, give more information, and we can look into if there's any illegal construction taking place, whether it's for the proposed ADU, or it could be completely unrelated, so I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're right. The one thing to note here, though, is if this is on next month's agenda, she won't receive another notice, correct?
That is correct.
So you'll want to keep an eye on this?
Yeah. Just contact the planner, and we can tell you in a few weeks if this will be back on next month. If it's, if it's later, if they need more time to get us the information we need, so if it'd be for the February meeting or later, we would re-notify, but just keep in touch with the planner listed on that sheet. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other comments or questions from the Board? Eric, did you want to add anything? Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
The next two cases are administrative only. There won't be an opportunity for the public to give an opinion. Agenda Item Number One, Case C-12-24-235. Applicant, Milestone Development, request final plat approval of Mason Place Rose, a subdivision inside city limits. Location southwest of 33rd and Mason Street. Eric.
Yeah, so this is the final plat for 15 lots and one outlot. It is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, which was on the October 2nd Planning Board meeting and approved by City Council on November 19th. Just one item that needs to be pointed out that'll be part of the recommendation. The applicant needs to coordinate with Public Works Department to ensure there's no private improvement encroachments into the sewer easement area that's existing. So with that being said, staff recommends approval of the final plat subject to no private improvement encroachments into the sewer easement areas and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Okay, any comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat subject to no private improvement encroachments into the sewer easement areas and the submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to the City Council for final action.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-10-24-171, See 12-24-172. Applicant McGill Industrial Park LLC and Burlington Park II LLC. Request final plat approval of McGill Industrial Park, a subdivision outside city limits, with rezoning from AG to GI and HI. Location northeast of Rainwood, Rainwood Road and Blair High Road. Eric.
Yeah, so we discussed this quite a bit in the pre-meeting, and I'll touch on a few main points here. This is the final plat for this 180-acre industrial development. There's 20 platted industrial lots, two outlots. There were 19 lots previously, so one additional new lot with the final plat. It was recommended for approval at July's Planning Board meeting, and the preliminary plat was approved August 20th at City Council. The applicant has been coordinating with the State of Nebraska regarding a few of the conditions in traffic study, so there's been some modifications to the street network, so one of them had to be converted to a cul-de-sac, so it does not connect to the frontage road. A few other items, there had been previous conditions to submit a hydraulic analysis to determine groundwater and well contamination risk based on some of the testimony we heard back in August from the adjacent neighbors. So the applicant has been coordinating both with the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy, as well as providing a groundwater modeling analysis that likely does not provide any risk to groundwater. However, those conversations in the final determination and concurrence with the NDE will be required before forwarding to City Council, both for groundwater and air quality control. Regarding the two lots that are proposed to be zoned HI, the applicant will need to continue to coordinate with city staff on a land use restriction or covenant that would allow for the proposed batch plant, but not other heavy industrial uses that could be allowed with that zoning base designation. Unless there's questions from the Board, I know we covered a lot of items in the pre-meeting. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to GI for lots 1 through 5, 7 through 18, 20, and outlots A and B. Approval of the rezoning from AG to HI for lots 6 and 19, subject to coordinating with city staff on acceptable land use restriction or covenant prior to forwarding the request to City Council. And then approval of the final plat subject to meeting the five conditions in the report prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Thank you, Eric. Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the rezoning from AG to GI for lots 1 through 5, 7 through 18, 20, and outlots A, B. Approval of the rezoning from AG to HI for lots 6 and 19, subject to coordinating with the city staff on an acceptable land use restriction or covenant, which will be recorded against the properties concurrently with the final plat prior to forwarding the request on to City Council, and approval of the final plat subject to meeting the five conditions outlined in the recommendation report prior to forwarding the request on to City Council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondle?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Okay, Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-3-24-282. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the Beam Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location 610 Douglas Street. And Don, you're presenting.
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This is a substantial infill redevelopment project in our central business district near Ethan Douglas Streets and near the riverfront development. The project itself, the Tiff project itself, is this darker building. It's a 17-story building comprised of 12 floors of apartment units set on top of a five-story enclosed public parking garage. Public parking garage will be owned and operated by the city. The top 12 floors of this building are apartment units. There will be a total of 261 market rate apartment units. I would note that there are two other buildings outside of the Tiff boundaries that are kind of related to this development, and that's the brand-new Children's Museum, which will be located directly west of the Tiff building, and a new open-air five-story parking, public parking ramp. This project is within an extremely blighted area. Another picture of the project itself. It's in an extremely blighted area, so this will be a 20-year Tiff term. It's also in the streetcar, well, the Urban Core Housing Mobility Plan area, which means it'll also be making a contribution to the construction of the city's new streetcar. The developer, 722 Douglas Street LLC, managed by Todd Huestad of New Style Development. Total project investment in our central business district is $87 million. The Tiff support for the project is $13,44,496. Project meets the required criteria of our Tiff program. It's been recommended for approval by the Tiff Committee. It's an appropriate land use. It'll be good for downtown, and it complies with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Yes, 222 South 15th Street, Todd Heaton with New Style. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and as you can see, that lot is pretty tight and pretty hard to make it work, and as you drive by, you're going to wonder how this gets put on, but we got it squeezed in over the last year and a half, so it should look well.
What's your timeline, Todd?
So the actual Children's Museum will be starting next fall. We're trying to get all the site improvements completed for all three buildings by, throughout the summer of next year. Children's Museum's going to be a two-year timeline, and then we'll be coordinating to where we'll be building the south garage first, and our apartments building, which will be a mass timber build on top, which will look great down there. And that should coordinate almost where it all comes online, right at, right at the winter of '27, '28.
Both properties?
Both properties, yes.
Good.
How large is that property? How many stalls does that property drive into your building?
So it's 207, the one that's connected underneath the building, and then there's another 293 next door.
And how many of those stalls?
Like, three. So it's 261 units, so with two bedrooms being about, about 20 to 30% two bedrooms, we're, we're looking at probably needing almost 400 stalls total. Yeah. Most, most people have a vehicle down this end of that building.
Looks nice.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd. Any other proponents?
Greg Rothenmel, 222 South 15th Street, here to answer any questions you guys have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, Greg. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric.
Yeah, obviously, I don't need to state the, just the great development that this is and just the continued growth in this downtown area, and we're super excited to be, you know, partners and working with the developer and the applicants, and recommend approval.
Second. Okay, Kathy, we have a motion and a second. Please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-3-24-283. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the 72nd Farnham Apartments Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location southwest of 72nd and Farnham Streets. Don, you're up again.
Yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning Department. The site is located along 72nd Street at Farnham, just a little bit south of our new main branch, City Library. It's being constructed. There's a total of five lots. They're being combined, mostly vacant. One lot has a freestanding Jimmy John's located on it. The site will be cleared, and a new five-story apartment building will be constructed. It'll have 176 market rate apartment units. There'll also be one retail bay, which will be a drive-through, take-out restaurant. The developer is, let's put up a rendering. The developer is Royce Candlewood LLC, managed by Lawrence James. The total investment in this site is $43.5 million approximately. The Tiff support for the project is $6,336,412. Again, this project meets the required criteria of the city's Tiff program, tax increment financing program. It's an appropriate land use for the area. It comes to you recommended for approval by the Tiff Committee, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. And we ask you for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Eric, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so obviously, this board, back in September, voted for approval of the PUR conditional use permit and rezoning, so obviously, it's a great project. Staff recommends approval.
Any additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondle? Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Agenda Item Number Five, Case C-3-24-284. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the Rose at Barkalows Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location 4209 and 4215 Ellison Avenue. And Don, you're working today.
Yes, I am. Third of three here. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, and this is a residential infill redevelopment project located in north- infill redevelopment project located in North Omaha, involving two fairly large vacant parcels. The parcels will be replatted for a row home development of fourteen units. These will be for-sale row home units, sold to income-qualified households, households earning between sixty and a hundred twenty percent of the area median income. It's, the sales price for these units will be subsidized by Spark Funding. It's a local affordable housing incentive program. This project is very similar to the recent Curtis Corners, single-family development, but it's by the same developer and the same concept. The developer is the Mensch Group LLC, managed by Philip McLean. Total investment in North Omaha in the neighborhood is about five point one million dollars. The Tiff support for the project is eight hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars. The project meets the required criteria of our Tiff program. It comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Tiff committee. It's an appropriate land use, and it complies with our city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, board members. Bob Griffith, one-one four-four-zero West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant Mensch Group. With me, well, today is the developer, Philip McLean, as well as Melvin Sudbeck and Jake Starnes of Sudbeck Companies, who are the builder and partners with Mr. McLean on this project. Thanks again to Don for working us to get to this point. He hit pretty much everything. Want to highlight again, as you mentioned, Curtis Corner, we got that approved last year, and of those nine homes, eight have been sold, and I believe one is under contract to close this month, if not already, hasn't happened, so. First project was very successful. We expect this one to be as well. It's pretty much the same product type. Again, it's a true low-income housing development. I think a great use of the city's Tiff program, and removing a substantial blight in an area that is looking for this kind of use, so. Here to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Just a real quick question for you. You said low income. It's hard for me to understand that two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars is low income anymore. And I know today, it is. It's a starter.
Sure.
It is. What's the selling point for your existing properties that you had, that you've had some success with?
I believe that was slightly higher, just because of the, these are two, three of this, the lots are fourplex, and there's one twoplex, and I believe Curtis Corner are all threeplexes, so the price point was slightly higher on those, maybe two seventy-five, I believe.
And where was that at?
Curtis Corner. So, it's Curtis Ave and, I forget the cross street, the Fifty-second Street, thanks, Don.
And any kind of market study, do you know that there is a demand for homes at this price point?
Yeah, the Sudbeck Company have done their, their market study for this. It kind of mirrors what they were able to get with Curtis Corner. It costs about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand to build these, and so kind of what Spark does, as Don mentioned, is it bridges that gap for, for the builder to make up that difference in between, to sell them at this lower price point, that is kind of an entry level that we can get into homeownership.
That's great for the area.
Yeah. But certainly, you know, it's harder and harder as interest rates are and building prices go up, so we're doing what we can.
Any other questions for Bob? Thank you, Bob. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so, the planning board recommend approval of the rezoning in the PUR at last month's meeting. Yeah, it's great anytime we can get for-sale affordable homes on the market. It's obviously a challenge, you know, we could, we could take ten, fifteen thousand more of these across the city, but unfortunately, we don't have all those tools available to us, so we think it's a great project, and there will definitely be high demand. Staff recommends approval.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Agenda item number eight, KC ten dash ten dash one hundred. Applicant Great Lakes Capital, request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Sterling Ridge, location one thirty forty and one thirty thirty-four Pierce Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Aaron Weezy with Olson, two-one-one South Sixty-seventh Street, Suite two hundred. One minor clarification of the staff report. We have listed in the amendment of two hundred and fifty units, I think two hundred and forty-four are listed in the summary page. We're still in design, so two bedrooms and one bedroom flip, but we're asking for two fifty, otherwise, we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, there's a couple of different buildings with the hotel, and then the mixed-use building that has restaurants, retail, as well as the multifamily, those additional units, that's fine. You know, there went, sorry for the discrepancy in the, in the recommendation report, but those increases of units does not change anything. So, there's a, a couple items that are modifications of code that are being incorporated in, as well as the height, and the applicant provided a very thorough parking study, and justifies the amount of parking, and staff is acceptable to that. So, recommend approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Sterling Ridge, subject to submittal of five acceptable signed copies of the amendment prior to city council.
Any additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Sterling Ridge, subject to submittal of five acceptable signed copies of the amendment prior to forwarding the request onto city council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Agenda item number twelve, KC eight dash twenty-four dash two seventy-one. Applicant IKEERAS Ventures, request approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in the R two district. Location one twenty-five thirty-one Shamrock Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Do you want the, my personal address or the address of the project?
Your personal address.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever, your business address or...
Okay, all right. Good afternoon, members of the planning committee.
We need your...
Yep, Heather Holmes, three four oh one Arbor Street, Omaha.
What was your first name, I'm sorry?
Heather Holmes.
Heather, okay, thank you.
I stand before you as the founder and the heart behind the Vibe, a vision for a holistic residential assisted living home that embraces the essence of a natural aging community. Today, I'm here not only to advocate for the project, but to share a story and a journey that led me to this moment and to this calling. When I was seventeen years old, I found myself volunteering at a local nursing home, fulfilling civics hours for a high school class. To be honest, I wasn't thrilled. My only reference for nursing homes were the tiled hallways and quiet voices I'd seen while caroling with my youth group. But then, I met Alice Smith in room five oh eight. She loved when I painted her nails, a passion we shared, and through our conversations, she saw something in me that I had yet to discover in myself. She embraced all my stories and showed me the wisdom of eighty-plus years, and made life feel and seem a lot more digestible. I visited her every week and even started painting her toes. My civics hours ended, but my relationship with Alice did not. I continued visiting her through high school and college, even as her dementia progressed and she did not remember me. She remembered my energy and that I was a safe person who loved her. Alice taught me that aging isn't about decline, it's about stories, connections, and finding joy in each moment. Our bond shaped my career and my life. Alice was a resident there for over ten years, and she saw me from a seventeen-year-old high school student to a college graduate, and saw me pregnant with my first child as the director of recreational therapy at that same nursing home. Her wisdom and spirit inspired me to dedicate myself to senior living, completing my master's degree, teaching at the University of Nebraska at Omaha, becoming a certified dementia practitioner, and opening senior living communities with my assisted living administrator's license. The work is not just my profession, it's my purpose. It's why I'm alive on this earth at this time, to be a vessel of transition for older adults and to trailblaze a new way of aging. The Vibe is the culmination of that purpose, a home that celebrates life's seasons and a space where residents experience natural aging in harmony with nature, a place that accepts the body's natural changes while promoting healthy living, rather than focusing on anti-aging interventions. We plan to adorn the walls with local artwork, share farm-fresh meals that nourish the body and soul, and foster a sense of community. Compassionate caregivers will provide personalized attention honoring each individual's journey. Our commitment is not only to the residents, but also to the community we will join. I want to assure you that we have taken every step to be great neighbors. We've designed the home and its operations to minimize traffic and parking concerns, residents will not drive, and our staff shifts ensure limited comings and goings. We plan to invest significantly in maintaining and enhancing the property, preserving its beauty while creating a sanctuary for our residents. I also want to address the heart of this endeavor, connection. The Vibe offers families in this neighborhood a very unique opportunity. When aging parents need care, they won't have to leave the area they've called home for decades. It allows the continuity of community and connection, both for the families we serve and the neighborhood itself. So, why here? Why Shamrock Road? This property was chosen because the architecture blends seamlessly with the outdoors. It offers panoramic views with sun-filled common areas. The core value of the Vibe is the belief that we are nature. The Shamrock Road home has beautiful wildflowers, space for winding paths in the backyard that will be lined with sensory gardens and native plants where residents can participate in therapeutic gardening activities and experience tranquility and peace. The home was lovingly maintained by its previous owners for over fifty years. Their family has expressed support for this vision, knowing it will continue to be a place of care and community. We have personally reached out to neighbors, handing out flyers, sharing our mission, and answering questions. We received overwhelming encouragement for those that we spoke with and addressed any concerns directly. If there are additional concerns, I want to hear those hesitations, and with my whole heart communicate, this is not just about business. It's about creating a home that aligns with the values of care, integrity, and respect. It's about being a steward of this neighborhood, contributing positively to its spirit and its character. To the members of the committee, I ask for your support. Your nod for approval to the city council will allow us to fulfill a vision that honors our elders, creates meaningful connections, and upholds the beauty of this neighborhood. This isn't just a project for me, it's a legacy of love inspired by Alice and all the older adults I've had the privilege of taking care of over these years. The residents who have taught me that aging is not the end of a story, but a beautiful chapter in itself. Thank you for considering my request and allowing me to share my journey and vision.
Heather, just a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
Great story, by the way, the great story and great passion as well, but just a couple of questions. Do you have business experience to run a facility? Like, I know you have experience in this line of work, but opening a business and staffing and managing the business, do you have experience in that?
Yes. Previously, I was the executive director of the Brant Senior Living on one hundred and eightieth and Harrison, and I was the executive director on that project from groundbreaking to open.
Okay, so you have a pretty good idea of what it's going to take to staff?
Absolutely.
Which is a challenge, right?
We have three staff teed up, and I already have three verbal commitments from families ready to deposit, and I told them I couldn't take their deposit because we haven't closed on the house.
Okay, so once you close, you're ready, so how soon are you, are you anticipating once you get through all your approval processes?
July first, twenty twenty-five.
So, pretty soon. And it requires certain licensing as well, I assume?
Yes.
Have you got the licensing, or at least the application filed for that?
We haven't filed the application because we need to get approval on the house. Everything's kind of six of one, half dozen of the other, but I know how to do that, and I've done it three times with previous roles.
Okay, and then all businesses require startup capital as well?
Right.
So, where does the money going to come from to start this?
So, we are fully funded.
You are?
Right.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Heather. Just saying, thank you, Heather.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other proponents?
Hello, my name's Colin Roberts, address four five five North Allen Street in Bennington, and I'm just here as a business partner to answer any other questions that you may have.
And do you have business experience in this, this area?
I have business experience in the construction space, as well as in property management, as well as in entrepreneurial funding and things to that effect, so I'm bringing more of the capital side of the house and the business experience side of it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Colin. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come forward. If, if you're all going to speak, you can come forward and take a seat down front if you want to.
Hi, good afternoon, Linda Carney, one-two-five-two-oh Shamrock Road, six-eight-one-five-four. Directly, if I back my car out, I will directly back into Dr. Mo Hedon, who I've known over fifty years, before he died last year, the previous owner of the property. So, my car would back right into their, one of their two entrances. It's a horseshoe U-shaped drive. Important question, I dropped off papers on Monday to Doug, so I assume you all have a copy, the three pages of thirty-nine signatures.
Yes.
Needed to make sure that happened. Those were directly on Shamrock Road, so I'm on Shamrock Road, I'm across the street from the property in question, and received those signatures just from fellow residents just up and down Shamrock, and then Lebonworth Street, the other street that accesses this property. So, per your, whoever lives in three hundred feet, all, all of us are, all our signatures are on that paper. No one immediately next to the facility desires to have the increased traffic, the decreased safety. The opponent, the, the opposition specifics are very clear in that paper that you received. So, I'm just going to add on a couple of extra thoughts. As a resident of a residential community, I would ask you to, so our neighborhood obviously isn't a business park, it's a residence. So, I'd ask each of you, how would you feel, literally, if a facility, and you know businesses bring a different flow of traffic than your fellow neighbors? How would you feel if it opened in your own, across from your home? Memory care clients have daily visitors. Very sad if they don't. I visit my own dad at his memory care facility. This home that I live in now is my dad's property, and it's the home I grew up in. So, he was able to find numerous options with everything Heather mentioned, paths, garden, tranquility. In fact, I take my granddaughter and his great-granddaughter, sees him every time I visit him, and we go outside, and we go to paths and all that, but that's in a business area, as opposed to our residential neighborhood, to allow us to keep our tranquility and safe travel. So, memory care clients, they, even though they don't drive, so they, they don't need a parking spot on the facility, but daily visitors, I would hope they have them. When I go visit dad, there's two sisters visiting their brother, and they do split shifts, and they say hi to each other every time they're busy, so there's two people there. So, when you look at and talk about the number of parking spaces available on that facility on the street is really what I'm concerned about. It's your standard residential street. If you've got one car parked out, my, my sixteen-year-old's car parked out, his pickup car, in front of our house, if you had one go in the opposite direction, there's only room to squeeze down the middle. And then, we have no sidewalks. We have daily walkers pushing grandchildren, a daycare next to me, dogs, all times of day, and they would be kind of squished in between that middle, and if cars are trying to come opposite directions, I may not be saying it great, but there's not a, there's no wiggle room for cars parked both directions on a residential street and trying to get in and out. And I don't know if you can see on your plans, but that's a curve, and it's the, I've been made aware by my neighbors that there's a drug and rehab place. Doug was aware when I dropped the papers off, so I believe you all are aware as well. There's a drug and rehab place four, four houses down from me, four houses to the south.
Okay, so you, did you say south of you, or?
So, literally, four houses, um, east of me, and then four houses south.
Yeah.
South and east.
Just one.
So that is also a curve, excuse me, it's also a curve, just like my house is on a curve in the facility, proposed facility would be on a curve. That's just the added, um, when you're trying to get down and squeeze through a middle, because they always have, even though they have a nice zoned driveway or whatever, there's still five, six cars parked out on the street. Which is why everybody signed that paper, because we're like, no, not more cars parked on the street. Um, not when we have all these walkers and dogs and everything else. So that's a huge concern. Obviously, um, you can receive, as I already mentioned, I visit my dad, you can receive those beautiful layers of care, and as a professional in healthcare, um, and I've worked with memory care, I've worked with Alzheimer's, all that, currently do as an occupational therapist. That's beautiful, but I need it to be in a business zone, not in a residential where I'm pushing my own granddaughter or walking a dog and playing on my driveway. Um, that threatens our, our safety in our residential zone. So I think I covered it all, and so does the written-up opposition with the signatures. Thank you for that opportunity today.
Did Heather come to knock on your door?
She did, uh, yeah, she, um...
Did you talk to her about your concerns at that time?
I listened to all her plan. When we met, um, three things were happening, like literally three cars entered. She was across the street, my son was dropping something off. So I, um, I did not, I listened, and I was so surprised. I just assumed another family was going to purchase the, it never entered my mind that a, um, a non-single family would be arriving. We're all looking forward to a, or a large family on our side, so we were looking forward to a new family. So, I did not.
That was it, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. Any other opponents?
My name is Christine Schaper, one two five one one Shamrock Road.
What was his first name again?
Christine. C-H-R-A-S-T-I-N-N-E. And Heather, I too love your story, I absolutely do, and your passion. As someone who has a mother who's eighty-five and starting her dementia, I love the idea. But as someone down the street from that, I'm not as excited about having that in my neighborhood. Um, we moved into this home three years ago, and the reason that we chose this home is because it is a very quiet, very secluded, um, I don't know if you have the map in front of you, but it is off the beaten path. I work from home on Fridays, and I bet I see two cars from eight to five drive up and down our driveway, so it's very quiet and very secluded. We put a lot of time and energy and money into remodeling our home in the last three years. We're of course concerned about property values. I've done a lot of research, and I've found it both ways, that sometimes it makes a difference and sometimes it doesn't. I'm more concerned about what it's going to do to our quiet little street. We specifically have a Montessori daycare directly behind us, they are in our backyard. We have another daycare across the street from us, who is Linda's neighbor that she mentioned. We have the drug rehab down and around the corner, and then we would have this. So we'd literally be smack dab in the middle of four businesses in our neighborhood. And so I am mostly concerned about preserving our neighborhood as a neighborhood and not, um, having businesses move in.
Christine, I wanted to tell you that we have one, not in my neighborhood, but out in our area, Hundred and Ninety-second Nicholas. If you didn't know, it was a house with dementia and Alzheimer's patients in there, you would never know it. I mean, it's, every time I go by, it's not my neighborhood, but when I drive by on Hundred and Ninety-second, it's rare that I ever see any activity there, so it's...
This is two houses away from me.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that.
But I guess my point was that you don't see a lot of activity.
Yeah. And again, I love the idea of the business itself. One of the concerns that we have talked about with the neighbors is, what happens if this really great business idea fails? Then it's zoned for this type of activity, and then we get another drug rehab on the other side of us. I mean, what would happen then if, does it have to remain as a elderly care facility? Or once it gets zoned, can it be?
They're here for a special use permit in the R-two district. So, you're already R-two zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know the terminology, I apologize. I apologize.
It's a good question.
It is.
Does the special use permit stay with the owner or does it stay with the property?
It stays with the property unless it was specifically conditioned differently. But the zoning code does say it runs with the land. Now, if it was approved, any new operator would have to follow the conditions of approval that would be set forth, and if they followed, you know, those approved conditions, they could operate, you know, with being a different ownership group. Uh, the zoning code has a section that allows for that, yes.
It could go back to the homeowner, so that...
Oh, absolutely, it doesn't say it has to be run this way.
What are, what are those approved conditions that you're mentioning?
I'll get to that with my part.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, come on down. Have to give your name and address again.
Linda Carney, one two five two oh Shamrock Road, six eight one five four. Do you handle jurisdiction over Bennington as well? Or is that part of Omaha? Not really, right?
Not in...
Part of the Bennington School District we do, but not the city or town of...
So, because of talking with the neighbors and the majority not in favor of it, several mentioned that this particular, Heather and her partner have tried in Bennington, where it was denied. So I just wanted to point that out. There, we're not the only neighborhood who also does not want our neighborhood to be turned into a business area.
We hear it every time there's an application for group living, so this board's familiar with opposition for these uses.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Do I have an opportunity?
Yes. Heather, I was gonna, just getting ready to call you up. And...
Heather Holmes, three four oh one Arbor Street.
Okay, do you want to address the points made by Linda and Christine?
First of all, this is the first time we have, um, applied for any special use permit. Um, the only connection we have to Bennington is Colin has a house there, but this is our first time applying for that. Um, I also do want to say, I'm disheartened, Linda, that, like, you came up in opposition, because I really tried hard to talk to her specifically, because she does live across the street. And when I met with her, what she said to me was, of all the things that could have happened to this house, this is the best news, because I am an OT and I know older adults need care. And her daughter talked about how she brings her kids, grandkids there on Tuesdays, and they could volunteer, and her son's a musician, and Colin's a musician, and he wanted to talk to them about that. So of all the people I thought that would be in support of the project, I thought it would be Linda. So I hope we can be good neighbors. Um, there's also plenty of parking at this, um, house. There's a side driveway where you could fit ten cars plus the U-shape. It will be our policy that nobody parks on the street. Um, there's, and that's one of the reasons we selected this location too, is because we know neighbors. I would be upset in my neighborhood too if there wasn't parking, so we were so thoughtful in that. And we have our real estate agent here, and we looked at so many houses, and our first thought was like, how does this affect the neighbors?
So can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
So how many employees will you have?
So during the daytime, there'll be three team members there.
Okay, and at any peak time, how many cars do you anticipate on property at any point?
Five or six.
That's it?
Yes.
And there, none of them are going to park on the street?
No.
How are you going to enforce that?
We will have a manager, there's somebody there twenty-four hours a day. If there are any concerns, I put my personal email and phone number and to all of the neighbors, everyone's welcome to call me, I will be on call twenty-four hours a day. They can call the police if they're upset and the cars can get towed. But I, you know, with such a small team, they understand to park in the driveway. And they want to park in the driveway, your car's safer.
Sure. And are you, do you have more points, because I've got a couple more questions for you?
Um, and then I just wanted to address the drug rehab place on Grayfond Drive, because I looked that up, because I heard that that was a concern for neighbors. And what I found out in the record was that the neighbors have called on it twice. It hasn't been substantiated as a drug rehab, and it was a small group permit, so it's different than what we're asking for.
We talked about that in our meeting, yeah.
I just wanted everyone to be aware.
So a couple of follow-up questions for you, just for the record.
You bet.
Strictly dementia patients, Alzheimer patients?
Yes.
Nothing else?
No.
Right, okay. And, um, you mentioned want to be good neighbor, obviously. Part of being a good neighbor is maintaining property as well. What are your plans to make sure that it gets maintained?
Yeah.
It's a nice area, right?
Absolutely, it's gorgeous. Yeah, that's one of our favorite parts about this house, honestly, is it's on an acre and a half almost, and it's two lots. So we wanted it for the big trees. So we have in our budget, a landscaping budget, we have a team on board to take care of it. We already are getting quotes for snow removal, it will be well-maintained. And if you think about it, like, the families that visit want to see a beautiful home that their parents are in. So it will always be maintained, because we'll be there every day.
And did, will your operation accept insurance, or is it private pay?
It's private pay. We also would take long-term care policies, and then with the federal government, there's an aid and attendance benefit for veterans. So those are the three funding sources.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
What's the turnover of your residents usually, like, what would you anticipate having new residents in versus like the length of stay of one person in your facility?
Yeah, so the average in Nebraska's a little bit higher than nationally, so it's about two and a half years, but with Alzheimer's and dementia, it's more about a year and a half to two.
So that would be the churn rate of like...
In these smaller settings, though, they get more attention, our staff-to-care ratios are so high, so the individuals do live longer than in the big-box communities.
So I guess my, where my thought was, if you do have issues with visitors that, you know, the first time they come, they don't know where to park, like, it's going to likely be the same people that will be coming, and you can educate them and make sure that they're following the rules that are in place.
Yeah, and as we onboard the families and talk to them, that's something we will say, you know, you're welcome to park in the driveway, this is your parents' home, park in the driveway, come on the front door.
Is there a cutoff time for guests to come and visit?
No.
But typically you...
It's usually business hours, nine to five, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Heather.
Thank you for your time.
Eric?
Yeah, sure. So obviously, we, um, there's a lot of these applications, whether they're small group living or large group living, that this board sees and, um, but obviously, um, different neighborhoods. So for the benefit, you know, of that group, I guess I'll just go through a few of the the standard zoning regulations as it applies. So large group living is a residential use type that is allowed in every residential district with a special use permit, as well as most office and commercial districts with either a conditional or a special use permit. So it's almost allowed in every zoning, uh, classification that we have besides the industrial. I think it is allowed in every, every one of them. So, um, yes, while you, you do have nursing homes or assisted living that, that can be in commercial and office areas, we also have them that are allowed in residential areas. And, you know, this specific use type is, is a residential use. Um, the special use permit process requires it goes through planning board and ultimately approved or denied by city council. The mention about the other facility, ten nineteen Grayfond Drive, um, obviously, our report did not touch on it. When this packet went out, we were not aware of that facility, at least with the section that creates the reports. So, um, just based on some of the recent emails and research, yes, we do believe it's a small group living, uh, disabled facility. There are, um, as Heather mentioned, there were two housing inspection cases last year that were closed with no violations found. This use, um, the code section does allow the large group living within twelve hundred feet of another small group or large group living facility. It just requires the special use permit process, which the base district already requires. So, um, even if that facility is, is operating legally, which if it is a small group living, it would not necessarily need any special permit, this use permit is still the proper entitlement, so that doesn't change anything with that new information in, in the recent days. As far as what conditions are being recommended, there was that question about that. There are supplemental use requirements, as you're familiar with here on the board, which means there's about ten or eleven items that an applicant needs to provide detailed information on. This was a very detailed and sufficient application, so there is no information that was unclear or that is still needed. So with our, we have three conditions, it's basically compliance with their proposed site plan, the floor plans and their proposed operating statement. So there's no, um, you know, they don't need to provide any additional landscaping or paving or anything like that. So, um, as far as the conditions, it's about as, as basic as a special use permit or conditional use permit that we see. You know, there was a comment, um, just the idea of aging in place, and we do think that's important. While, you know, there are different types of facilities that care for, um, you know, these individuals that need additional, um, healthcare. You know, we think it's great to have a combination of, of everything throughout the city, and whether that's larger facilities, that may be more appropriate or, or better suited for certain individuals. But we do also, um, value the importance of, of these smaller-type facilities within neighborhoods. And, uh, we do have, um, you know, dozens of them around the city and throughout all parts of the city. So, you know, perhaps you have somebody that's, that's lived in a part of town, you know, their entire life, and yes, while this is probably a, a very drastic change of having to go to this type of facility for, for end-of-life care, but, you know, if, if you have that idea, we talk about that with housing all the time, whether it's apartments and, you know, being able to move into a house. So it's, it's that same idea, um, kind of aging in place, same part of town, that we think is, is a great benefit. You know, um, the idea about the traffic or, or parking, yes, there is ample, um, onsite parking that the existing driveway can accommodate all the cars. There's no waiver of, uh, parking regulations that's being asked for or sought. I mean, if, if this state is a single-family home, you could have somebody that has a lot of cars, a lot of teenagers that, that have a lot of cars, so, um, you know, yes. Could there be a little bit more vehicular trips to and from the site? Yeah, possible, especially with a few workers, but, um, really, it might not be any difference if it was a large family that moved in that had multiple cars or drivers. I think that covers everything I wanted to touch on, unless you have specific questions.
That's got everything I had listed.
Okay, so you can continue conversations, um, or ask questions, but staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow large, to allow large group living on the property, subject to the three conditions I stated earlier.
Eric, I have a question.
Yeah.
So in the future, they sell that property, you said it stays with the property. How would, could a halfway house, could a drug rehab, could a prison transitional-type housing, could that go in there without any net, any other necessary approvals or permits?
No, so to elaborate a little bit on the, the group livings, small group living has two defined use types. There's small group living disabled, there's small group living non-disabled. So small group is when you're dealing with between four and eight individuals either living with a handicap or not living with a handicap. Large group living does not have a separate designation between the two. However, their operating statement is very clear about their clientele and who they're dealing with. So, um, while you don't have that, you know, let's say somebody wanted to move in, and it was eleven individuals that just, let's say a fraternity. I know it doesn't apply this part of town, but a fraternity could be a large group living use type. However, they are not individuals dealing with dementia or Alzheimer's. They would not be able to comply with the requirements of the approved operating statement.
So the operating plan stays with the property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, the operating statement, the site plan, the floor plans, those all go, um, to any future potential owners. If you're talking about, um, you know, transitional living, that's a different use type when you're talking about people that are serving out their terms from prison. That's an entirely different use type that, that would not carry over. That would, um, that would either require a new, I, I don't think it's allowed in this zoning district, but, yeah. So, so.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to make one comment. Uh, Heather impressed with her story, by the way. I just had a, oh, in the last five years, three, four, three years, I guess, I had a father-in-law and a mother go through the dementia. And I can see more and more of these coming into the city. Uh, like Eric was saying, that staying in your neighborhood and being able to go someplace, and it's, uh, I don't know, I intend to vote yes on this for you, but, uh, I think it's a, it's a good use. No comments or questions or... I'll just add another thing too, and, um, I agree with everything that's said here. And I think as far as impacting neighborhoods, this is probably the low, least impactful thing that can happen. These folks are very dependent upon others to take care of them. Uh, and there's protocols in place that they don't go wandering and stuff like that. And so, uh, this is an ideal setting, from what I understand.
And so, uh, this is an ideal setting from what I understand, looking at the site plan and stuff for what they have. And this is only going to get a higher demand as the aging people come. And I've had members of my family that, that have been in the more institutional situations, some very terrible stories. And, and I see this as something that we as a society need to support and try to help. And if it, to answer the, one of the questions, would I mind if they were now next door? Absolutely not. And so, um, I will also vote for yes when, when the time comes. I just want to set that aside, that we've done, approved a number of these. And I, to my knowledge, we haven't had any come back to us that the neighborhood was, felt that we made a mistake. So.
Yeah. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit to allow large group living in the, on the property, subject to the three conditions of the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number 14, case C-10-24-273, C-7-24-274. Applicant HNLR Omaha Holdings, request approval, approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple family residential in the GO district, along with expansion of the ACI area of civic importance overlay district. Location, 10842 and 10826 Farnham Drive. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chair, Board Members, Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of the applicant.
Michael, could you spin this over?
Yeah. Sorry.
Well, there you go. There you go. Right there.
There we go. That's why they pay me the median bucks. So this request relates to a, a proposed development of multi-market rate, multifamily housing located in, in one of the commercial hearts of the city, uh, which is the old mill area, uh, on 6.75 acres of land, uh, directly across the street from the Charles Schwab, uh, regional headquarters there. The proposed project would, uh, consist of 327, um, market rate units. And, and when I say market rate, the, uh, the project itself is, is fully funded privately. There's no incentives, uh, associated with it. So the development team is, is raring to get started on it. It's a good reuse of the, of the existing site. It currently, um, consists of a couple of office buildings that have been vacant for some while. They were built in 1986. And then a parking garage that was built in 2009, uh, kind of in the center of the lot. And the, the office buildings will be raised and that, that's where the apartment buildings will be. But the, uh, the parking garage will be repurposed as a parking garage for the tenants. So, um, a nice reuse element to the project, um, which we think fits very well with the, uh, with the site. They will be high quality residential units. There will be quite a few amenities associated with those. I, I won't go in depth on, on all of those, but it's, it's really aimed at being a, a place where people want to, want to actually live and, and not just a, uh, you know, year to year sort of, sort of thing. We expect that tenants will really want to, want to stay there, um, for a long time. Aside from that, uh, I, I won't get into, to too much detail because I have people here with me that, that can do that, uh, much better than I can. Terry Morrison of, of Airheart Griffin, Jay Palu of Alley Pointer, and then, uh, Chris Halby of, of, of the development team as well. So happy to answer any questions that you have. And the last thing I'll say is that with respect to the stipulations in the staff report, uh, we're okay with those. We will work with the planning department, urban design to get those, uh, cleared up as we move forward. So appreciate your consideration and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other proponents?
Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin and Associates, 3552 Farnham Street, to here to answer any engineering related questions. Airheart Griffin and Associates.
Any other proponents?
Jay Palu, Alley Pointer, McKetto Architecture, 1516 Cummings Street, architects, uh, team leaders and here to answer any questions specific about any of the amenities or how we're going to build these buildings.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Any other proponents? You keep trying to make it down.
103 Stephen Mather Road, Darien, Connecticut. And we're the owners.
Chris, did you say? Okay. Thank you.
Are you going to be, continue to be the owners?
Yes. Yes. And, um, my wife is here. It's a family-owned property. And I just want to clarify, we are still trying to lease the two office buildings. And that is by far our number one objective. And CBRE is representing us in connection with that effort. We do not like the idea of tearing down two buildings, which are in excellent condition. And we worked with Alley Pointer and with Terry's firm to try to repurpose the office buildings to be multifamily. It breaks my heart from an environmental point of view to remove two buildings, which are in excellent condition. Schwab is here today and, uh, they have been our tenant. Their lease expires in February, at the end of February. They have invested a great deal in those buildings and maintained them very, very well over the years. It's a shame to tear them down. So we hope that the buildings can be leased, but leasing activity, as you probably know, is very low. So we can't just sit there and go on for years, you know, paying the costs of maintaining these buildings. So this is Plan B. And Plan B is to tear down the office buildings, keep the parking garage and build very high quality buildings, which we hope to own for 40 years. And, um, it's, it's in our ethos, if that's the right word, to do things right, um, and to build at a higher quality. And, um, regrettably, the cost of, of building multifamily is very high. The difference between building the least expensive multifamily and then building something which is high quality in terms of better lighting and better finishes is relatively small. But either way, given where market rents are, it's a very marginal project. You don't, you don't get a lot of reward. Yeah.
So Jay, is it?
Chris.
I'm sorry. Chris, Chris. Jay was the other person.
Yeah. Jay's our architect.
Yeah.
Who's excellent.
So I just, just to clarify here, because this is the first time I've heard A and B.
Yes.
So you own the, do you currently own the office buildings?
Yes.
And your lease, is there any, but any tenants in those, as you mentioned?
Well, our tenant is Schwab, but they're not in occupancy because working from home meant reduced need. And so they've withdrawn back to their headquarters building across the street.
Okay. So if you could find tenants to occupy both of those buildings, you would just prefer to?
Yes.
Lease that space and forget about Plan B then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And to further clarify.
How long are you going to give it to, to, to know whether or not that's the plan or to move forward with Plan B?
I would say six to eight more months before we throw in the towel and move to Plan B. And so the, the, what we're asking for today is a change which would allow us to build a multifamily, but would not require, I mean, that you would permit us to continue to have office as long as we, you know, have the stomach for absorbing the monthly losses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know if it's going to get any better anytime soon.
Sadly, sadly, it's not looking too promising.
Yeah. Yeah. And your project, your, your Plan B project looks pretty, pretty darn nice, right? It's, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a nice project for the, for that area.
Thank you. And I, I.
Which would work, I think, because you're so close to a major kind of business area right there too, that might need people to, to live and.
Well, to be honest with you, um, there are some wonderful things about where we are. The access, the very central location. If you were to put a pin in the middle of Omaha, you'd probably put it very close to where we are. You know, there's great highway access, there's a great road system and Old Mill is quiet. We're, we're essentially on a cul-de-sac. So, you know, people don't go driving around for no reason. Therefore, there's very little traffic overall. So it's quiet, it's safe, it's central, it's, you can get places quickly. If you're interested in Whole Foods, it's nearby. I love Costco, it's nearby. Trader Joe's is nearby. So those are all wonderful things.
How long have you owned that, that property?
Five years.
Five years. So a little, so I'm going back several years when Old Mill was first developed and, and it was kind of a traffic jam in there for a long time, right? But it's, it's eased up tremendously over the years, obviously. But five years ago, it's, it's, yeah, it was, it was, and that was about the same time Schwab, I think, took over, TG Ameritrade took over that building or went into that building.
Correct.
Right? Yeah. Yeah. And you're from Connecticut?
Yes.
Okay.
But I lived in Omaha and I worked for Cutac Rock.
Did you?
For three years. So I, I was here from 1978 to almost 1982. And I loved living here. I moved from here to New York because I was a tax lawyer. And, you know, where do you practice tax law? But I loved living in Omaha and, um, I made a lot of dear friends. And for the past 25 to 30 years consecutively, we've come back to Nebraska to have Thanksgiving with friends whom I met, believe it or not, on the very first week that I was in Omaha and I didn't know a single person.
It's Omaha.
It is Omaha.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Now Schwab's representative is here and, and I would introduce her by saying that seldom does any landlord have a tenant which is better than Schwab. They have been incredibly responsible. They're great to work with and we were very, very fortunate to have them.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Any other proponents?
Hi. Good afternoon. Tanya Curlin, property director for Charles Schwab at 200 South 108th Ave. I'm here today just to ask a number of questions. Chris and Carolyn and I, and Kevin Manning, who is also our property manager here in Omaha, we have a very good working relationship. Schwab has, from a corporate real estate perspective, um, we have returned to office as of January of this past year. We have about 2,200 people at the tower that work on the campus, um, no less than three days a week. And they're currently capable of working from home if they're not in training, uh, the Tuesdays and Fridays. What our concerns or, I mean, we're, we're not against the, you know, redevelopment. Obviously we would hope that Chris could get at least out from a, you know, from a office space use standpoint, but it is a challenging market that we, and we are in post-pandemic. What we are potentially asking are just what are the opportunities for, um, helping with traffic? And yes, it may not be busy, you know, eight hours a day, but there are rush hour periods of time where it's very difficult pulling out of, whether it's our parking lot or even theirs, right? And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, we had, when we previously, we moved out in December of '23 due to the pandemic. Well, you also had, we had about 400 occupants in there or of clients of ours that were working for Schwab. And then I believe you had Prime as well. Was it Prime? Another tenant in there. So the questions that we have today are, you know, just what are the traffic counts projected with the future occupancy? You know, would the city, um, you know, be open to adding a traffic signal? You know, added to that residential development and/or the Schwab entrances on the north and south side? And just any type of, you know, and we'll work with Chris and Carolyn on this too when they get closer, if they do end up developing. But just any project timelines, any construction detours. Again, we have 2,200 people coming in, um, at the early after, you know, hours and leaving in the afternoon. And then just making sure, and I know that they will do the right thing, just making sure there's no impact to the utilities. The Omaha power, uh, public power district, they have two circuits that feed the transfer switch for the Schwab campus, which is located on that northwest, um, side. There's an easement there on that property. And that's our redundant power. So we just want to make sure that we don't have any business issues, uh, with operations. And, um, you know, last but not least, this may be a stretch, but Schwab's currently responsible for five medians of landscaping on 108th Avenue from Old Mill Road to Harney Street. And, you know, the question is, would that be something that the city would be willing to take back on, just with the added growth there? I believe, and then the last but not least, um, just, you know, if this use is changed, any future plans for that area? I mean, there are some hotels that are pretty, not on the nicer side. But just what would this change of use do to that community? You know, we'd like to understand what the city's thoughts are there and how you see this going forward, uh, moving into a, you know, multifamily environment.
So Tanya, can I ask you a question with regards to kind of along those same lines? And I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit.
Sure.
Is Schwab committed to stay?
Absolutely. We own the building.
Okay. That, yeah, I know, but you just recently.
Yeah. They are, they are 100% committed. I manage our Lone Tree Campus as well as our Omaha Campus. This is one of our major service centers. This is where we bring in young talent. We're training them and, you know, they start their careers.
And you had 400 employees working out of the office buildings?
Approximately.
You didn't have enough space in your existing tower building to, for all the employees? Or why, why, why'd you have two separate facilities for?
There wasn't, there wasn't enough space at that time.
There wasn't?
Yeah. Once TD Ameritrade was acquired by Schwab, there was some downsizing that was taking place. But, but.
And that's when that occurred then?
Around that time, yes. Yeah. Because the, um, the announcement of Schwab acquiring TD Ameritrade was in November of 19.
Wow, it's been that long.
And it took three years. We just finished the conversion this year.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, or, so were you coming down?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Hi, my name is Jane Penaro. I'm the representative from Catholic Mutual Group at 10843 Old Mill Road. Not really necessarily an opponent, but our neighboring, um, our parking lot butts right up to this. And it's the parking that's a concern. Since it is a business park and we are business hours, evenings and weekends are wide open. We don't have a garage. We just have a lot of concrete and a lot of spaces. And ours is going to look very, very good to apartment people for carryover parking. Then we come in the next day and so we are, if this is actually going to happen, we're already having to look into, do we do the arms at our entrances? So we only allow our employees, our visitors, our vendors in to our property. We do not want any parking in our parking lot. And it is literally like just over the berm is our giant parking lot. And from the plans I saw, I didn't really see where there would be enough parking. You've got three bedroom units. You could have three different people with vehicles. You've got guests, you've got, so that's mainly our concern is parking and how to keep an apartment complex where we're in a business park. So normally we don't see people around wanting, looking for parking in the evening or on weekends. And, um, so that's mainly Catholic Mutual's concern and traffic. Thank you.
Are they, are these still staggering start and, and, and times in, in Old Mill with businesses?
We, we have, after the pandemic, we went to a staggered days. We tried to have everybody there on Wednesdays. We are only open till noon on Fridays, so a lot of people don't come in on Fridays. So you might see like five cars in our parking lot on a Friday. Most everyone is supposed to work in the office two days a week. Most people, a lot of people are in more than that. But yeah, it's like a, you know, remote type situation. We do, there is a building that is just to the east of us, but more to the, it's a to the east of us, but more to the, it's a one-level building. We allow them to use some of our parking spots. We don't charge them, but we have an agreement with them, no liability. So, you know, we're open to that, but it's just, yeah, open parking. We, we don't want just open parking in our lot.
You have a lot of parking.
We have a lot of parking. And a beautiful lot. We just went through a big renovation where we tore out all the old blacktop, put in new concrete about seven, eight years ago. Huge project. Kind of proud of it. Yes. We're an insurance company. We don't want liability. Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I guess Terry, Jay, either one, want to come up and address the concerns by Tanya and Jane?
Yeah, Terry Morrison, 3552 Farnham Street. I guess with respect to the parking, it was in the recommendation report talking about required parking. I think we have approximately 512 units shown right now. Parking stalls, there's 383, plus or minus in the existing parking garage, plus the new onsite parking with some reductions due to proximity to public transportation. There's a requirement of about 489, so right now, we're in excess of that. There will be some bike, bike parking onsite as well, probably. There's been potential for coordinating with bike service, bike share services and stuff. So based on the requirements and what we're providing, we feel there's going to be sufficient parking.
I assume there's a, there's a, there's a, in that area, there's a bus line that goes in and out of there quite frequently, right? Because there's a lot of businesses in there.
It's within the quarter-mile distance, proximity for, for a reduction in parking.
You may not be able to answer this, but if, yeah, Tanya brought up any detours during construction. I don't know if you can answer anything about that.
We shouldn't have much disruption in the road. The road is actually an extra-wide road compared to a typical residential road. So even if we had to shut down one lane or half a lane, there would still be sufficient room for two-direction parking. Sorry, two-direction traffic, however. We shouldn't really be constructing out in the road. There's going to be sidewalk construction, some trees, but otherwise, the curb line is going to stay where it is. So shouldn't be much disruption.
Thank you. Do we want to call Ryan up? They had a question about, Ryan Haas, can you come forward, please?
Ryan Haas, who are the Public Works Department?
Tanya brought up traffic questions and traffic signal questions.
Yeah, so unrelated to this project, there was an effort or correspondence, coordination from Schwab to the Public Works Traffic Engineering Division. So a study is underway to analyze traffic conditions at, I believe it's 108th Avenue in Farnham, one, one of the intersections where they requested signalization. So the, the staff members that are actively pursuing that study effort are aware of this project. I passed along the parameters so they can kind of factor that in. They are aware that the current office building is vacant, and they're aware of the number of units that are proposed for this potential project. So that'll be factored in as they consider the, the potential there for signalization.
Did you say you're currently working with Schwab on a traffic, talking about traffic signal?
Yeah, that's, again, unrelated to this project. I was just made aware of by, by other staff members in my division that that's something that they're coordinating on.
Ryan, on that front, if, if there is a determination that a, a signal is warranted, how does that work as far as cost or installation? Does that impact this project, or how does that get accounted for? Is it too premature without knowing what the study shows?
I think it's too premature, Eric, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's all I had.
I guess, Ryan, I, I have a quick comment. I don't know the history of the maintenance of the medians. I assume that would require some, some different conversations. I don't know the history, and I don't know if, if you have any knowledge of it either.
I, I don't, not directly. If that's something that, there's a desire to at least engage in discussions on what it would look like to potentially change that arrangement. You know, I know the city doesn't really provide anything other than very minimal maintenance of medians, so that's, we don't maintain landscaping and medians. So if, if Schwab wants to reach out to the Public Works to talk about what their desires are to potentially change what's going on out there, that they can do that by contacting Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Eric, would you talk about the A and B options? And how that would work with the city and if there was an approval today?
Yeah, sure. As far as the planning department of the city is concerned, it doesn't necessarily change what we're recommending or what you are voting on today. As part of the conditional use permit process, it says a conditional use permit shall become void two years after the date on which the permit becomes effective unless the applicant receives a building permit and diligently carries out construction or commences the conditional use before expiration of that period. So, I mean, if the project was approved today, there's basically a, a clock that starts for a two-year timeframe. And if nothing has begun at that point, sometimes people have brought cases back in to renew a conditional use permit, which would, if that was approved, that would restart the two-year timeframe. Or if it's approved and the project never moves forward for the multifamily, then it just, it just dies, basically. And, you know, obviously, it has the base zoning that's in place for the GO, and office is allowed, and there's other uses that are allowed. So, no, we do not have any concerns about the two different options. So our code accounts for, for that.
I don't think it's any different than any time we were so good. It's like we don't require anybody to do anything. It's just giving a thumbs-up of approval.
Yeah, and sometimes there's projects that are approved and don't happen for whatever reason, if it's financing or a change in plans. So, yeah, we, we assume all these projects happen, but, you know, there's not 100% hit rate.
Did you want to carry?
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll carry on with a few items. Obviously- Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
If I might, Jay Palu, again, Alley Pointer Architect. I want to clarify to-
I need your address, too, sorry.
1516 Cummings Street, Omaha, Nebraska. One of the key criteria for a multifamily when it's not in an area where parking is up to the developer, in other words, no limitations. We have done a lot of work to make sure that we think the market will support, and we meet your requirements for parking so that residents have convenient, easy parking. Because we have an existing parking garage, we're also investing in potentially up to 50 EV parking stalls. And if you're following trends in electric vehicles right now, it's not just a parking garage. It will have electric vehicle charging within, and it's also covered. So although there is a chance, there's no physical connection to the adjacent parking lots. You have kind of one way into our parking garage off of the street. There could be the chance that someone would choose to park further away, walk over that berman end. But we really will discourage that by having people come through the main lobbies where mail is, where packages are delivered, and then access to our parking garages, which feeds into these two individual buildings. So we thought a lot about that. We think we have more than enough parking to cover the market need. We also think it's the best and most convenient. We have concerns about all residents, though, in an apartment building, which is why we've had extensive conversations about management and staffing and how we're going to make sure they park in the right spots, they pick up after their dog if they do go onto the Catholic Mutual property, those sort of things. So that's all kind of part of our hope and help with Chris and, and his team on making sure it's a great place to live. So we've kind of tried to accommodate all of those things. And if you want to have any, any other questions, we have a number of amenities in this. And in the application, it was a little bit unclear, but those are only for residents. So when we say things like dog spa, that's just a fancy way of saying residents can take their dog downstairs, clean their dog, watch television while the dog is in the dog run. It's not a for-profit business.
It's not a for-profit, so it's going to be owned by the same group that owns-
It's just an amenity like a, a club room, exactly. That's used by the residents. Yeah, we do have a, a space right now in the facility as the application describes for a daycare facility. And that is intended to be a tenant. And we see that as an amenity for residents, so they can take care of that within the building. It's not sized large enough to take care of the entire neighborhood, but-
But, but then the daycare would only be, be able to provide the service for residents of the apartments or outside of the apartment?
We would accept outside the apartment as well. And it's allowed within the conditional use that we, we've applied for.
Allowed with the base zoning, yeah, it's permitted use.
Yes, and we have parking to accommodate that as well for code.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Yeah, just to jump off what Jay was talking about, you know, as far as parking on adjacent properties, you know, it's really the management of the property. And, you know, if it's well-run with signage and, you know, you don't want to threaten them that they're, you know, but you can get across to residents that parking's not allowed on the adjacent properties. There is not a parking waiver that's being sought. There are a couple waivers that are being supportive as far as floor area ratio. A little bit of a quirk because multifamily in this district refers to the R7 district, which has a lower FAR than what is allowed under the base GO zoning. And then also, the other one was a slight decrease in density, which we are supportive based on this metro mixed-use area. But parking waiver was not one of them. They did just touch on the accessory uses, a few landscaping items, which they sound acceptable, too. So there'll have to be a, a few modifications to plans and work with the applicant before building permits middle, whenever that may be. There is an ACI overlay that is being applied to the property, so that is the only item that will go to city council. So you can continue conversations, but staff recommends approval of the ACI overlay district and approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in the GO district subject to the nine conditions in the report.
Any additional comments or questions? Yeah, before I make a recommendation, I'll just, I share a comment to Chris. I, my whole business, business life has been building buildings. I've had to tear a few down. I don't like tearing them down. But in this situation, it's probably the most novel adaptive reuse that I've, I've seen, if that is what has to happen. So, anyway, with that, I'll rec-
I'd like to add one other thing. Being, being the traffic engineer on, on the board here, I've done a lot of traffic work over the years in this area. Also designed the West Dodges, that's why I did traffic signal studies in there. So I know the area very well. And it's horrible. It is, I don't, we would never do that in this day and age, a one-way in, one-way out. But it's, but to see a use that is changing away from the intensity of an office to a mixed use is brilliant for this area. I mean, that's, that's what we need to do. So I fully intend to support this. And it'd be nice if there was another couple of those in this, as that will help level out the traffic better. So, anyway, just wanted to, there, there is a big traffic issue here, and it ain't going away with this, but this will help a little bit.
Good insight. Thank you, Matt. Okay, with that, I'll recommend approval for the ACI area of civic importance overlay district and approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple-family residential in the GO district subject to the nine conditions in the staff report. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Ecker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondal? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
That was it, isn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck on your decision, whatever it is.
It's not an easy one. I'd love to.
Do we have a motion on last month's pre-meeting and public meeting minutes?
Motion to approve November pre-meeting, public meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please re-record the vote.
Rose Ecker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
I have to abstain.
Six to zero.
And then do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
Moore? Morris? Rose Ecker?
Yes.
Pate? Tondal? Sotolongo?